Like I guess like based you that's for this part. For the August meeting, so you got an email yesterday morning. So that's, so that is a question that I have. Right. The music studios here.
Music studio and the.
The hair salon, yes stylist chair.
I drove right past here, this is supposed to be fifty feet wide.
Uh, I think it's deceiving, I think this.
Doesn't this come a little more than it looks like on the map?
Yeah, I think it's just deceiving, you know, you're going by here at an angle, this driveway probably half on here, so if it cuts across here. I don't know if there's really.
Yeah, there is one there and there, that's what they're saying.
But it's supposed to, that's a utility pole too, you should be able to see it, but I think it just vaporizes from this back there.
Yeah, like.
I mean, this is a little bit over a tenth and a half of an acre, so we're not a lot.
It's not a lot, no.
I mean, tenth of an acre is four thousand square feet.
You got six, six thousand.
Yeah, so this is six thousand, some people's house is six thousand square feet.
Yeah.
It's a lot, it's a lot.
Not mine, but some people's for sure. You're loaded stuff here. Above a barn, so.
Hey, don't knock that, someday you'll miss it.
Yes. I drove around. It does tiny and I think it's, I think this is, this is overgrown.
Because it's vacant, yeah. They're probably using part of it too.
And there's like, there's like a fence there.
Because look at this, the way this goes at ninety, cuts back over, so naturally you move that and hold this line straight across. You know what I mean, like, these are concrete steps back here, those are probably not, you know, wherever those go to, you're only a foot and a half from.
Yeah, well, and it's like, there's concrete pads, like where are those, they're just little.
Those are abandoned from when the property was there at one point, never just left already.
Okay, I think the easiest thing to do, so is when you're out there, if you stand at this corner. Look to this pole, that's the lot line, same thing if you stand on this corner, look out here, big tree, it's basically a lot.
I know, it's just, it's like when you drive past that little lot, you don't even notice there's a lot there.
No, it's deceiving for sure. It's that's.
I didn't, I didn't know it until I looked at the Google Maps from the top down.
And then you can notice it.
Satellite picture, that's.
Yeah, I mean, this is equal in size to this here.
That seems. Well, that's what it looks like on the picture, but in person it doesn't seem like that.
And this, you know, you look in here, it's not as good.
It's pretty setback, that building is pretty setback.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, like, you know, you realize this compared to this, anyway.
Okay.
A lot of boards walk everything and.
Yeah, no, we probably will have to.
Have the uh. Architect or engineer stake out the building so they can see where all the corners are gonna be, so I think it's.
We've, we've done that.
Yeah, it's not inappropriate that.
Yeah, okay, well, I guess, wanna record and we'll get going. Is everybody here that needs to be here? Is Mr. Buckley here? I don't know Mr. Buckley, are you Mr. Buckley?
Uh, no.
You're Mr. Okay, hi, okay, um, then I'll call to order the July nineteenth planning board meeting. Um, so say we um, have new business, Sean Buckley, Nine Avenue A. Um, this is supposed to be just an informal discussion about the projects, that's how, how it was presented to us, um. So prior to the official site plan submission, um, this meeting's just to be a discussion about what you wanna do with the property that was the old funeral home. On Nine Avenue A, um, but I also wanna bring up because yesterday, uh, we received also kind of part two, it seems, of your project. Um, in an email, so if you, it would probably be better for all of us, um, if you just kind of. Talked us through, went through your entire proposal, so it's not, I wanna do this this month and that next month, so kind of what your whole idea for the site is. Cause there's three lots involved, so.
Yeah. At David's, sure, engineer architect, has done all the uh, strongs and everything and knows all the lingo and. Everything.
Okay.
So we were.
Absolutely, you know, we welcome the opportunity to be before the board, present the project. Uh, you are correct, there are three lots in the periphery that are ultimately involved. In the overall development of that corner, uh, of the property on Avenue A and the main street there. Uh, but right now we're before you for Nine Avenue A because it is an existing funeral parlor that's a pre-existing non-conforming condition. And uh, the owner would like to convert that to a professional office building, which is allowed by your code under a special use permit. So there'll be no change in footprint to that funeral parlor, uh, it, they'll, we're not proposing an addition or any increase in area. Uh, he would like to upgrade the building to make it more aesthetically pleasing. I believe we provided you architect preliminary architectural plans to show what the elevation and the floor plan would look like. So the building's about sixteen hundred square feet, you know, it'll, right now we're proposing three office suites. With common body and a bathroom and a kitchen area, uh, the building will be made contextual with the neighborhood. I believe the design accomplishes that, and uh, there's enough area in the parking. Uh, areas, it's not redundant, but that would allow about nine parking spaces and perhaps even more. Uh, as we believe the nine parking spaces satisfies a three office suite since uh. It's not expected to be a high density area of uh, people within each office suite. Perhaps not as many people at most, or three. So, uh, we're, that's why we're here before you, the building's a apartment rented, it's specifically referring us to you that it would be allowed a special use permit. Under that zoning section and we would like to move ahead through the process. Get your comments and uh, questions and answers so that we can move ahead with the next with ID approval.
So this is where I'm concerned that we're only hearing about this one part of the project, because I know from what I saw uh, yesterday. Uh, in the email about the second part of the project's on the two eighty seven Hudson Street. Is that you're looking to do a three-story building that would have commercial on the first floor, and I guess it would be of apartments upstairs. But you are also looking for a waiver on the parking requirement on that. So seeing that these lots are, you know, conjoined lots, and you're proposing only nine spots in that one lot, and you would have no spots in the other lot. So that's something of concern right off the bat, so that's why, that's why I kinda like, would like to hear the entire project proposal.
So, you know, so prelim, uh, there are different zones, ones in the SR zone, others in commercial zone. Um, just as you had mentioned, uh, two seventy eight would be commercial space or retail uh, space and residential above. We did not propose any off-street parking, we were hoping that the parking would be satisfied, parking requirements would be satisfied on Hudson Street. Uh, the, the third lot, uh, right now, it's my understanding that there's a. A great need within the area for a small house, uh, so uh, I think preliminarily. Uh, the owner's thinking about developing that third lot, which would be five Avenue A into a, a single-family home. Or re- some type of residential application that would be within the consistent need of the village. And that, that project would not require off-street parking, uh, cause it, it, well, it does. Uh, require off-street parking in the sense that if there's two cars that are needed, we'd have to house them on the property. Uh, but it wouldn't impact the overall parking constraints of within the village or within.
Yeah, no, five wouldn't have any impact on that, but.
Are the three lots commonly owned?
Yes.
By Mr. Buckley?
Uh, yes.
So, it's several things, so that, that single lot, if you were to build a small home, how will you sell it? It'll have to be subdivided.
No, which.
No, it's, it's its own lot.
It's its own lot, oh, okay, it's.
Yeah.
Second, okay.
Yeah, uh, you know, I can understand your thoughts, you know, we, again, it is three separate parcels, three separate projects. But I do, I do understand the board's thoughts about wanting to get an overall feeling for the development of that area.
So, so let me just run through what I've been thinking, so today we're only talking about the funeral home building, is that right?
Correct.
So all you're gonna do is make that into, the stories are not gonna go up.
Correct.
It's gonna, you're just gonna make the building nicer, and it'll be an office building.
Correct.
It's sixteen hundred square feet, so nine parking lot, parking spots cover the need.
In our case, no question, right, okay.
For three offices, for three, three offices, right?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, that's it.
I think three offices are the two seventy eight, it's two suites.
No, it's not. Three office suites at, at Nine Avenue A, yeah. And what about that little building that's behind, I'm, I'm sorry, there's a little house, it looks like, behind the funeral parlor now?
Yes.
What, is, is that part of this parcel, or is that?
It is, so you have two structures on this parcel, uh, the owner wants to keep that second structure and. Not change its use and not change its occupancy, it is a three-bedroom residential house. And uh, it would, it would stay within that kind of use.
So it's.
So that would constitute uh, an accessory use. So I'm assuming, right, uh, one building is gonna be a primary use, and then that would constitute an accessory use.
And so there's cars associated with that small house too? Is there parking next to that house?
It's in the back.
Yeah, I know, is that?
Yeah, um, there's some, I mean, we can further delineate that on the plans to show how parking could be included for that small house.
Right, cause.
A single residence, right?
Correct.
It's three-bedroom, single.
And the house has its own address?
Yes, it's a separate structure and it has its own entrance.
It's, it's Nine Avenue A though, it's just an accessory structure on Nine Avenue A, right?
Separate entrance or separate address?
Uh, mailing address, like Nine Avenue A, then the lot you're making Five Avenue A, right?
Five Avenue A is a separate project, separate parcel.
It's, it's not behind.
No, Five Avenue A is here, it's this fifty-foot wide.
So how are, how are those two buildings referred to in terms of, say, nine-one-one?
One's on Hudson Street.
Uh, the fun, I'm talking about the funeral home and the house behind.
What is it?
Yeah, it's not on Hudson, it's.
No, they're on Avenue, that's what I'm saying, how, how are they?
They're both on Nine Avenue A, they're both considered Nine Avenue A.
Okay, so if, if, once this project goes ahead, we'd have to get us another nine-one-one number, one of the two.
So I'm not sure if I heard you right, it sounds, it sounded like there was a mixed-use building there, when you said a commercial on the bottom and then apartment upstairs, did, did, did I miss that?
That's not.
No, it didn't, but that's a separate project, it's two seventy eight Hudson Street.
Okay.
Um, again, that's not the application for you, however, you know, we can discuss and develop that.
Okay.
Um, but right now, you know, we're, we're not presenting that, we're.
Okay, gotcha, scratch that.
So, uh, I'm coming in from behind there, Nine, uh, Lover's Funeral Home, I come in back through two-two seventy eight. Right, they're all connected in the back, I haven't walked it yet.
Yes.
So when you, when you build according to the plans, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm not a professional architect. Uh, um, so you're proposing three twenty-nine-hundred-plus square levels, is that right?
On the two seventy eight project, yes.
Yeah, yeah, alright, so I, I, so parking spaces are. Eh, are, are derived by so many parking spaces per square foot, am I right? Or?
I have a square foot of the building for the.
So that's nine thousand square feet, close to it, twenty-nine-seventy-two times three, with this little asset, uh, list, about eighty-nine-hundred, something like that. So, how many parking spots will be needed for that project, or we don't need to talk about it now?
Well, I'm, I'm curious to talk about that now.
Because that's, that's a lot. And I don't think Hudson Street has that much parking.
No, it's only on one side of the street, and that's. And there's a hair salon, and.
Yeah, it was, the calculation would be one space for every two-hundred square feet. Of floor area, so that's.
So that's for the first floor? And then upstairs would be bedrooms.
No, just, just take the total into there, divide into eighty-nine-hundred.
What's above, David, what's above? You're not right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I gotta be honest, I'm at a loss, I don't have those plans with me, you know, wasn't uh, prepared to present that tonight.
Okay.
We are talking, this is informal conversation, right?
So, I, I, I would, I think we proposed residential above, um, and commercial, on the first floor, commercial retail. Do you, do you have that application?
Yeah, David, this, this is, I think they're asking about what is on for tonight, right, so.
Well, no, two seventy eight is a vacant lot.
Lot in the back.
Two, two seventy eight Hudson's a vacant lot.
Right.
This is really small, it's. Oh, it says on here, I don't know, I can't read it. I need a magnifying glass, it's too small. Third floor, professional offices. Can you see, Will? You don't have, do you have it, did you print the email from yesterday?
No, no, they've been none of them.
First floor and professional offices on the second and third floor.
So there would be all professional offices, no residential in that?
No residential.
Okay.
So just, just basic calculation requires forty-four-point-five approximately parking spaces. I don't, I don't think Hudson Street can support that.
And that's why we're bringing it up, because you're conjoined to an area that happens to have a lot of pavement around it, right? The funeral home has, so maybe you can reconfigure some of that, that's why, like, the whole project matters to us, because. You're gonna ask for a really big, if you're gonna present this next, you're gonna, you need forty-something parking spots. The Hudson Street doesn't have forty-something parking spots, you only park on one side of the road there, but you have at the funeral home maybe potential for a different parking configuration.
You know, uh, you know, I appreciate your thought, I mean, that's definitely something that could be considered, uh, given the overall uh, area of the three lots. Um, you know, there, there were, there were a whole bunch of things that come to my mind associated with, you have shared parking, access to it. Uh, the ownership, uh, is it a co-op, is it a restricted covenant or easement?
Yeah.
To, to, uh, from one property over to the other, you know, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Jason would understand, so, um, uh, there are definitely a lot of thoughts with that, uh, but it is something that we can discuss further, investigate further.
So Nine Avenue A is what we're talking about today?
Correct.
And that's it, and Nine Avenue includes the house in the back?
Correct.
But not the lot?
Correct.
So, the only thing I, I have a question about the house in the back, because it looks like there's a deck on the front of the house in the back that is partially on the other lot.
We're gonna remove that, eh, eh, on the second, on next month's submission, you'll see that poetry board.
Okay.
And, and also where the two, the house requires two parking spots?
It's a three-bedroom, so it requires.
One and a half, two.
So, so that, you will also put those on the prints?
Yeah, we can develop that a little further and do, and show that on the plans.
I mean, in order to go through, go forward with Nine Avenue A, that has to be on the prints, right, because it's accessory?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think, you know, there's a number of things, again, uh, we're making a presentation tonight, uh, I think you guys should get all of your. Comments or concerns, doubts, I think it's good to at least have, be aware of the other applications, you know, that's not to be considered tonight.
Mm-hmm.
There's probably some variance if you can add Avenue A who requires a lot of those.
Well, I mean, if, if, if he's not changing the footprint, then building exists, so why would he require variance?
How to change your use?
But he's not changing the use.
Well, he is, it was a funeral home and now it's office, so like, it's a changing.
Okay, it's a business.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I think like you, it's still a business, it's a business, it's not like.
Anyway.
Well, actually, it's a corrective measure, I mean, the hero parlor is not compliant with your current zoning code, but professional offices is, is a use that is compliant.
Yeah, I mean, I think both Biz and I are saying, I don't think we're concerned with the, your use plan or anything, so. And it looks like you're gonna spruce the building up?
Yes.
From its current state.
That we can do. We can make more confusion with the other thing, but the building we can make beautiful, that's for sure.
That would certainly help.
Where, how is that lot accessed from Avenue A?
Yeah.
From the Avenue A, so, I believe there's a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty feet of frontage over the Avenue A.
Yeah, it looks like one's a hundred and seventeen-point-six-four.
Right, and when it turns over, yeah, it is, uh, it's a little bit more.
Oh, it's bigger, yep.
And, and how big is that lot?
I mean, it's this whole lot.
What, what, how, I can't, well, how many?
Let's see, oh, point three-seven-six acres.
Oh, okay.
So.
That's a big lot in the village.
And you, you said that the house behind will not be changed?
Correct, not if now it's used, you only like to spruce it up, you know, and make it look nice, uh, but it's used to not change, it would remain a three-bedroom residential house.
And it's on the same lot as the former funeral parlor.
Yes. And it would continue to be, it's only accessed, those buildings are only accessed from Avenue A, right? If I'm correct, there's no drive-in from Hudson Street?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, it's just set back, you can see it from Hudson, but it's set way back, yeah, okay. What type of, of professional offices do you anticipate being in the new building?
Uh, along the typical lines of, um, architect, engineer, uh.
So all three offices will be sharing the toilet and kitchenette there?
Correct.
Can, can I ask a question to Manny? Manny, on your, um, you kind of put together this checklist, and there were just some things that, um, I may as well bring up while we're sitting here. Because it all, we're doing a special. Out of the code, right? And, um, so the site has sewer and water, um, but there were some things, like the lot, a personal combination of lots or personal shelf front on Academy Ave. On your checklist, you checked yes, there's no access or even, it's not next to Academy Ave, so I was kind of wondering what.
I probably mentioned it for, for location, not for access, I said probably, uh, so many feet from the corner of Avenue A and Academy.
It says the lot or parcels, or combination of lots or parcels, shelf front, on, on Academy Ave.
Right. On Academy. On you.
Hudson Street.
Right.
Oh, okay, I, I, I thought you were talking about something else, okay.
Oh, I'm just trying to be clear on what he's asking.
I think, I think what, uh, the chairman was saying is, you, you've tried to lay out all of the requirements.
Yeah, okay, now let's see what you're talking about, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about something else.
But it can be a little confusing, like, for instance, I don't, one of the criteria is to have water, village water and sewer, that's a yes or no, they, they either do or they don't.
Right.
But some of the others, maybe there's a category for, you know, for, for determination or something, because when it's checked off yes. I think you're checking off that that is a requirement, but it's not.
Well, no, the, the, the way, the, the reason for this checklist is for you and for the applicant.
Right.
These are the requirements for that zoning, the applicant will check off yes or no, and then demonstrate that to you, whether it's, if it's a yes, then why is it yes, if it's a no, why is it no?
Okay, so who checked off yes?
That would be the applicant.
Okay.
So you checked off yes, but it's nowhere near Academy, so what do you mean by yes?
Yeah. Now I understand.
Yes, you mean Hudson Street.
It's Hudson.
Academy starts at the blinking light, the way I see it.
Yeah, no, it does, so that's why I was like, I was like, oh, you can't go through that. And that was, so number three is the same thing, cause I was like, it's not possible to. And it says vehicular access to Academy Ave shall be without traversing other streets, but that would be no also, because you're gonna come and go from Avenue A, not, not Hudson Street.
Yeah, and this is to provide information to you, as, as is happening now, but.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just getting clarification, you know, like, so, those are both actually no, and then, um. The setbacks are also. I don't think we meet the code in setbacks, so we, would we need a new variance? Oh, I skipped that one, because that one's actually checked right, number four, the parcel shall have a minimum.
Right, so, but does that require a variance, number four?
Oh, yeah, so does that, do we need a new variance for that?
Well, that's what we talked about a little bit earlier, whether, you know, the change of use requires a new variance or whether.
Yeah, that, that would be a variant. Okay, so we, you'll have to go to the ZVA to get that variance.
That is correct.
For a pre-existing non-conforming condition, because it's a change of use, even though we're going for a, 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 a condition that's not consistent with the zoning code to a condition that is.
Well, that's what I'm trying to clarify, so.
It is a change of use nonetheless, although it's coming to a more conforming, it's still changing the use, so it, you need to get approval for that use. To get the, the variance on the lot area for that use that you're applying for now, you have it for the existing use, but now you need it for the new use as well.
And like we're saying, we're not really concerned about the new use, it's just checking all our boxes.
Uh, you know what, on one hand, I can understand, because this is an opportunity to just codify the whole property, so it, it complies with. The code, the zoning code, or any granted variances, so it's a good opportunity. With the planning board, then give us, refer us to the zoning board to do so.
And that's the same for the setbacks?
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
I mean, in the setback, he just needs one, the side yard, the ten-point-seven?
I think so.
That's the only thing, otherwise, everything else is good.
Yeah.
It's not fucking bad.
These actually, that's for the.
Well, yeah, that's why, you know, it's all, um, landscape offer, that's fine, Manny building, show that. Yeah, I don't think there's any.
I think if you're, if you're gonna go to the ZVA, you should, uh, clarify whether that accessory use. Is permitted in the zone, not variance at a pre-existing condition as well, this way he doesn't have to worry about it going forward either.
I, I mean, I have to agree, if we're gonna end up with a zoning board, let's get the interpretation, let's get the variances, get every, every area variance that's.
And that's not changing at all, but you should just solidify it.
Those were the. Main questions I had on this, does anybody else have?
Is the, if, if, I'm just confused, uh, if you, so the guy who owns the, um, funeral home building, which will become an office building?
That's Mr. Buckley, right there.
Right.
You also own the house?
Right.
And so forever you have to own that, or can you sell them separately if you wanted to?
They're always together.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, both structures are, are existing.
Couldn't sell the, just the house?
How is that house listed now then, like, if it's an accessory structure to an office building? Is it currently an accessory structure to the funeral home?
It was.
It's an accessory structure, I don't know how it's, how it's classified, apartments are allowed accessory use under the jurisdiction of that district.
Yeah, okay, just curious.
The owner of it.
The owner of the funeral, yeah, I mean, that's what I thought. The owner of the funeral home, yeah, I mean, that's what I thought, I thought it was, but now it must be someone else, since it's no longer a funeral home, okay. Yeah, so I mean, I don't know, that's all we had to do, just talk about it, really, so.
So now we need to refer him?
Yeah, can we make an actual referral right now to the ZBA, Joe?
Well, we really don't have a, are we gonna get a further application for the other property? And you said you were gonna make some revisions to these plans?
I mean, the thoughts and the concerns you bring up definitely warrant some type of conversation between us and the owner and and to discuss the project further. What will we have? We have seven days, uh, before we let, need to let the board know if we're gonna amend the application, before we can be referred to the ZBA.
Well, I don't even, I don't even think this is a formal application yet.
At at this point, at this point, they need, this is just to talk about exactly what you're doing now, and maybe for you to make changes to the plan, and then make a formal application to the planning board, as a formal application public here in the whole nine yards, and then the planning board will decide whether to send you to the ZBA, depending on what happens at the meeting, so.
I would say that then, if I were you, I would want to have your formal meeting for both two eight, two seventy-eight and this together, if you, or you're just gonna be.
So is the next meeting a formal meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
If you submit all the prints and stuff that we talked about, right?
Alright.
Joe?
Right.
He needs to, if he wants to have a formal meeting, he's gotta have some, like, prints better than this.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing in the code that says how many informal meetings you can have, does you, you should have one.
At least one, yeah.
One, so, um, just gonna kind of throw it back to you, right? So, uh, if you think you're gonna submit a more formalized plan that you want the board to act on, starting at the next meeting, that's up to you, or if you think it's beneficial for you and you're inclined to come back with more revisions and discuss it, that's up to you too.
I I understand, sure.
I guess I'm, what I'm asking is, um, will he need to come and have an informal meeting about two seventy-eight particularly? Or can we consider this his informal meeting about two seventy-eight? I just ask that for sense of, you know.
Yeah, yes, yes.
We can consider thi- this it, or he will need to come back?
Well, the code says you'll need a a a meeting on the application for two seventy-eight, right? But I guess everybody's saying the same thing, it makes sense to look at everything together. Um, so, I don't.
I'm just thinking in their best interest, it's.
It's it's two fifty every time, right?
I would say.
Better to.
It isn't complete.
Yeah, in your interest, I think it's better for you to talk to us about everything at once, because otherwise you're coming to us multiple times, you're going to the ZBA multiple times potentially, so.
It'd get expensive.
Right, I I.
It's it, it's ironic, back in March, our initial submission was one big site plan of all three of the lots.
Oh, I'm I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
So, uh, and that's that's a, well, uh.
And then we got you.
Yeah.
It came you?
No.
No, uh, we do, we separated, we separated.
The reason why it wasn't, it wasn't done that way, because they are three separate lots. I don't have the authority to say, okay, take three lots and bring it into the planning board, a three separate project. If you choose to do that now, you can, but I, at my level, at the initial, I gotta send each project separately, because they each had the wrong, in their different zones, so.
Yeah, but they can, um, they can come. They can come separately, but they can come on the same day, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, if you choose, yeah, that's, I'm okay with that, if that's, if you want to do that, yeah.
I don't, I just don't want to drag them through the hill over and over, so I'm saying, yeah, put it together and.
And I think reading through all of this.
Level of confusion that was on, you know, right?
Because, you know, everybody's agreeing, there there were not forty, thirty, forty or more parking spaces right there on Hudson, because it's parking on one side.
It's one side.
Yeah.
Even the hair studio and the music studio, which are small businesses, have a good amount of accessory parking.
They have designated parking.
And if you drive by, those lots are full all the time. So I I think that's the main concern, um. It's a small lot, I know you're not here to discuss the two seventy-eight, it's a small.
But I'm welcome, I welcome the opportunity.
But it's a, it's a, actually, we go around for you out, because we got that application in and we basically said, well, okay, we're gonna be talking, let's just talk about everything at the same time. But anyway, so that's a small lot, it doesn't.
I would work drinks and pastries, you know, we got a real nice discussion overall there. You know, if I know, I mean, what can I say?
See, along two seventy-eight.
First question.
The owner, the owner is a village resident, so you you know how many parking spots are there?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Um, on two seventy-eight, uh, what's a better thing for the community? Uh, professional space above, if it was to go through, or residential space?
Well, I would say one, uh, one house, one level.
Come, yeah, no.
A zero, and, uh, well.
Why come down to the parking consideration?
Well, because I see like the, uh.
I I mean, I think parking is an issue, right, in that area of the village,
Actually, the zoning outside of our house.
But I don't think that that anyone's opposed to adding residential above commercial. Our code says you have to have commercial on that first floor there on Hudson Street.
Yeah.
And I think that's a really good part of, I like that part of our code a lot.
Yeah.
There's nothing to say that it has to be residential or commercial upstairs, you know, so.
I see in the the master plan, whenever that was written, maybe not too long ago, that, you know, um, the residential above, you know, the, the retail, um, is a good thing. I know people should, you know, have to push back, I guess, to get parking, same as the, the beauty salon is a smaller lot.
Yeah.
It's actually shorter and skinnier, I think it's about five feet skinnier, uh, maybe ten feet skinnier.
But they have just one residential dwelling in it, so.
That was from probably eighteen eighties, but, you know, I don't know how it looks.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, but I know for the lot, because my lot is overgrown right now, so it's kind of goes like this, it's hard to see that.
That is.
It's sixty feet, and I think his lot's fifty feet, or maybe by experience, maybe it's fifty feet, I can't remember offhand. Um, because I get confused with, uh, five avenue, like, they're very similar, um, in size.
Yeah, they're surprisingly very similar in size, even though they don't look, like, one looks much smaller. But, I mean, if you consider that parking in residential has to do with bedrooms, um, you know, nice one bedrooms use less parking than, you know, nice large one bedrooms use less parking than all that commercial space or two or three bedroom places. So that's something, like, you could consider too, when you're.
And I do, yeah, because I know there's a shortage on studios and stuff like that, or just, everything's, everything's big bucks now, it's like, if you wanna live in the village, you better, you know, and if you're gonna buy a house, it's a lot more money now. If you're looking for apartment, it's a lot of money.
Oh, yeah.
You might as well just pay a mortgage, you know, so there, you know, so, yeah, studios are a a good thing. Um, five Avenue A, which I know we're not there yet, uh, was that same thing, I have so many people that always come to me saying, I wanna live here, my kids are going to college, but I can't afford my house, it's it's just three bedrooms, I don't wanna keep walking upstairs, and I'm just putting money into it because it was built a hundred and twenty years ago. So they're like, I just want a little, small house, all on the same floor, living room, kitchen, bedroom, maybe a little guest study on the loft or something, you know, in case the kids come back. Um, and that was the idea with, uh, five Avenue A, um, just because I think.
That that's, that idea is sold.
Yeah, just because it's not, it's not like.
I'd say about four buyers in this room.
I'd say, like, uh, every other month, uh, someone has a couple friends with.
Could we have a little round?
Um, and it says the same thing, you know, they're retiring, they wanna downsize, they don't wanna leave the village, they wanna maybe go down to Florida in the, uh, in the winters, come back during the other seasons, but they're like, there's nothing, where are we gonna go? You know, so they end up, you know, out of town, across, uh, thirty-two or, you know, further out to Guam or, um.
In a condo or something, yeah. No, I mean, I, that's a great idea for a use of five.
In a condo, yes. Yeah. Um.
And I just, I think that it's important for us to have the conversation about the other building too, because,
Yeah.
you know, when you're thinking about what you're gonna present, whether it be commercial or residential, all of that.
I I I, I'm a little bit hesitant to say this, but I don't think the zone allows for apartments on the two seventy-eight Hudson.
It's in the CBS, right?
Yeah, so you can have, you should be able to have residence.
The CBS.
Multi-family dwelling, multi-family dwelling.
Yeah.
Yeah, allows retail store, personal shop, bank, theater, medical, dental, restaurant, professional office.
Your two neighbors both have that.
Specialty shop, meeting, auction, Houston, hotel, multi-family, animal hospital, and one. So those are the permitted uses with site plan approval, which you're gonna get anyway.
Right.
Um, so I I think it would, it would be allowed under multi-family.
Mm-hmm.
There's a weird quirk in the code that says that you're not allowed to have two family, but you're allowed to have, it's specifically listed that it, uh, allows multi-family. Because I came up on the property that was.
What's it?
Where the old barn was.
Oh, well, moon, half moon.
Yes, yeah, I think we talked about that with Tom.
Yeah, he had the same, sort of same, uh, group along the line.
Yeah. Like, it has storage below, and then the apartments above. So it should be permitted, of course, you need a site plan approval for that too. And they require less parking depending on how many units.
Yeah, depending on the number of bedrooms you have, that, units and, you know, bedrooms total, really.
Okay, so where do we go next?
Where do we go next? I guess they put their formal, I would say, put the formal applications in, and we will see both of them in August, if if they're ready to do that.
We make further this application, or we may amend this application to include one or two of the other lots. Okay, that's fine.
Do you have any other questions for us? Are you there?
Well, now, I have a question. I know we're not here to talk about two seventy-eight.
Let's just talk about two seventy-eight, and then let's, let's get it all out there, that's fine.
Well, that that's the next application to come to the board.
Right.
So, um, again, do you, are you looking to come back next month? Do you wanna hold off on coming in on two seventy-eight until you do some different analysis?
Well, you know, I agree with your thought, uh, and, you know, we do need to talk about it further. That's why I said I either will further this application, or we'll come back, uh, or or we'll amend this application to include one or two of the other properties, and make it more an all-inclusive site plan review and process.
I.
So I just don't know which of the two we're gonna do right now, I gotta talk it over, but, um, the next submission date, well, we we already submitted for two seventy-eight, uh, if we were gonna amend the application.
We're not, we're not here to talk about two seventy-eight.
If we're gonna amend the application, it would have to be within next two weeks, I would imagine.
Yes.
Right, yeah, so the, so we'll, we'll, um, we'll, we'll, we'll go into.
Let us know whether you're ready for August.
Yeah.
Sure.
Or not, and.
I just wanted to be clear that we're good to talk about two seventy-eight and nine at the same time, you know?
Absolutely.
And five, I mean, all, you know, all of them at the same time, because I think it's just, it'll be better for, it'll be better for you as a whole.
Well, you know what, thank you very much, boy, appreciate it, it's actually, it's good, first time I get to present before the village, so, uh, happy to to do so and get to meet each and every one of you. So have a good evening.
Alright, thanks.
We'll talk further, but thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't know what she was talking about, it was like, you know, falling out of something.
I didn't, I didn't realize it was a building, it's like, I would have settled well, sorry.
That's okay, that's alright, that's alright, how you doing, man? Good job.
So we, we still have, um, the funeral home? We still have minutes to approve, you could go ahead and just do that. We have minutes from the Tuesday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty to twenty fourteen to approve, um, is there anything that anyone noticed in it, or are we good to have a motion to approve this? So then legal motion to approve this? This, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so those are approved. Is there anything else we need to talk about on the record, or can I?
Um, just to be clear, for the applicant, you want, if he comes back for informal, you want all three application together as one, as one meeting, even if we have it as three separate application, but you listen to it in one meeting.
I I just think, well, if it's, if he wants another informal conversation, then we certainly can talk about all of them, but I I, that's why I was asking, can we, can, if we talk about two seventy-eight today, can we consider that his informal conversation about two seventy-eight? So when he comes back with his complete applications, we can actually talk about them, rather than forcing him, you know, it just costs the applicant more money if we have them come back five times instead.
Well, he chose to just present one, I mean.
I I get it, but he happens to receive part of it, and I think the two matter, you know?
Okay, so if he comes back to me that he wants to, to another, uh, informal, tell him to include the two, and we'll put it on on a separate application, but on the same meeting?
Yeah, and, um, I, like I said, I think I'm happy to have it be not informal, is what I'm saying.
And then you can talk about it together, okay? Okay, very well.
That this could be considered his informal one, so.
Okay, thank you.
So then, um, yeah, can I have a motion to adjourn in the meeting?
I make the motion.
I second, Kristen second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't know, that just means they can't hear you, she's shutting off. What were you kidding?